Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the city council meeting. I'd like to remind you to please make sure your cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham. Councilman Smith. Councilman Avery. Councilman Back. Councilman Wilson. Councilwoman Minatra. And Councilman Robinson. We have a quorum present today and the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Keith Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this day, Lord. Thank you for the opportunity you give us to serve you through this great city, Lord. Just thank you for allowing us to know you, Father, and just have that wonderful salvation that you offer, Lord. We pray that we use that to glorify your name in all that we say, do, and think. We pray and ask for your blessings on this council, the mayor, his administration, and all the residents of this city. Just fill this place, Father, with your Holy Spirit, your wisdom, guidance, your knowledge, and discernment so that we may make every decision that brings you honor. We give you all the thanks and praise in Jesus' name and prayer. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The chair will entertain the motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting held on September 23rd. So moved. Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain that. There we go.
Did you turn it on?
Oh, did it? Okay, thank you.
No, it did. He forgot to turn it on.
No. I promise I turned it on at the beginning. All right, item six, the chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of September 19th through the 25th. So moved. Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item seven is reserved for proclamations and commendations. Mayor Ford, do you have any of those today? All right. Okay, item eight, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of an ordinance rezoning property located at 756 Walnut Street from O1 Office District to R2 Multifamily District. The owner is attempting to sell the property to a buyer who intends to live in the home, but lenders will not approve a mortgage for the property because it isn't zoned residential. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval. As a reminder, speakers should limit their comments to the subject of the proposed rezoning. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? This ordinance was presented today for the first reading and the council will vote on it next week. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to recess the council meeting in order to conduct the work session. So moved. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to recess the council meeting, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries for the recess.
We will now move to item 10 on our agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to reconvene the council meeting. So moved. Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to reconvene the council meeting, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries for the reconvening.
Item 11 is unfinished business. We have none today. Item 12 is a resolution awarding bid number 3609 for Downtown Intersection Renovations and Pedestrian Access Improvements Project. The city engineer has recommended awarding the bid to Bob Smith Construction Incorporated and the amount is $869,735.50. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion?
Just for the sake of the public's information, Mr. President, this is the project that's been discussed and reviewed. We had a conversation, an actual public meeting with downtown business owners about this. This will be the renovation and improvements of the sidewalks and the intersections on Broad Street and Chestnut Street. That will include restructuring of the traffic flow, trying to deter commuters and through traffic on our pedestrian areas, you know, these common pedestrian-friendly walkable areas like our downtown. So this will, hopefully if we change the way the traffic flows through this area, more people will choose to utilize me again if they're just passing through instead of rip-roaring down Broad Street at 50 miles an hour, you know. So that's a project that the engineering department's been working on for quite a while and it's exciting to see that come to fruition.
All right, anybody else? Thank you, Councilman Wilson. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 13 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to make applications for airport improvement funding assistance from the state of Alabama Department of Transportation and the Federal Aviation Administration for fiscal year 2026. The city is the co-sponsor for the Northeast Alabama Regional Airport and wishes to apply for grant funding for airport improvements. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, this allows us to continue to apply for grants that we've been receiving and we hope to receive more grants, but we feel favorable about this and thank you for consideration.
Thank you. Y'all doing a great job out there. The director's doing a good job.
Got a good airport authority and a director, yeah.
It's really moving forward. Anybody else? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 14 is a resolution authorizing donation of property for South 11th Street Partial Alignment and Resurfacing Project from the Bridge over Black Creek to Randall Street. This is for donation of .751 acres of city-owned property defined as track number five. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, just want to clarify that this is part of a, well, really the last phase of an ongoing project that's been going on for almost a decade now to resurface and rebuild and, in this case, reroute South 11th Street. It'll just be a slight adjustment in the route so that the little kind of S curve you get as you're coming up the hill there, coming from the Flatwoods, coming back up into downtown. You won't have that kind of chicane. It'll just straighten that out a little more. And more importantly, it'll add a sidewalk that will finally connect to the major construct, South 11th Street construction project that was finished last year. So now you'll have uninterrupted sidewalks all the way from South Gaston all the way up through downtown, past the old high school, past the historic district, past Striplin, South Sixth Street, all the way up into Broad Street. So that entire community now from South Gaston all the way up the hill, all the way into the downtown historic district and Council Avenue and all of that, all the way over to Broad Street, will have uninterrupted sidewalks to where they can walk and move freely. And it's all just part of that grow Gaston plan that we've all been working on, the mayor's been working hard to execute, that makes this a more walkable city. It's a more pedestrian-friendly city and there's tons and tons and tons of data out there that shows that not only does it make our citizens healthier when they have access to sidewalks and they're able to walk, but it's a tremendous improvement for, unfortunately, cities like Gaston and these low to moderate income areas. There are a lot of households that either have no vehicles or only one vehicle in their household with multiple residents in that household. So while a lot of people around here, because we're such a rural community, you see a lot of people driving. It drives me crazy when you go over to somebody to a birthday party, you'll see four people in the same family parked right behind each other down the street. They all drove separate cars, but, you know, in a lot of other communities, that's not the case. And so if we can cut down on the number of vehicles on the road and encourage our citizens to utilize sidewalks and become a more pedestrian-friendly city, there's a ton of reasons. It saves money on paving projects. It saves, it makes our community healthier and it provides a critical resource to our low to moderate income citizens who are looking for alternative forms of transportation. So this is a great project. This just gives a little tract of land to help that project keep moving forward.
All right, thank you for that, Councilman Wilson. Any other comments? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 15 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Westervelt Ecological Services LLC. This is for purchase and sale of mitigation credits required by the Army Corps of Engineers for construction of the South 11th Street Partial Realignment and Resurfacing Project and the amount is $32,450. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion?
Just, this is boring stuff, but same thing, South 11th. A little piece of this project kind of goes into that wildlife area over there and some of those marshlands can be considered protected because of the wildlife that exists in those types of ecosystems. So in the instance where you might get into a section of that marshland or something, the federal government and the state requires you to go out and buy some credits that preserve the same type of land in another area is the easiest way to say it. So we're not getting rid of these natural wildlife habitats for these birds and natural residents of these areas. So if we're going to cut out a little bit of marshland, we got to go buy some credits to preserve some marshland somewhere else.
All right, keep that balance.
Yeah.
Anybody else? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, moving along here, item 16 is a resolution authorizing acceptance of the 2026 Transportation Alternatives Programs TAP Grant Funds. This is for sidewalk and street scape improvements along Chestnut Street from South Sixth Street to South Fifth Street. The total project cost is $1,208,257 with federal share of $800,000 and local match of $408,257. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Mayor Ford.
Mr. President, this is something I want to thank Heath Williamson and his engineering department. I said last week, this is just as big as any project that we are in development of right now. But the improvement of the sidewalks downtown is just phenomenal. We're able to be ADA compliant, people going from grocery stores to senior living facilities, not having to get out in the middle of the road and ride down the street, also to get across Broad Street Bridge now. And I want to thank the citizens for bringing a lot of the intersections to our attention. And Heath and I talked and we've decided to put those on the agenda and they've been completed. But this will continue to make the sidewalks look good downtown in the area. It's very important for a lot of people to have this, especially that have to have a chair to transport themselves. We're just, this is big news to us and we're excited. And if you don't mind, if I can also mention something else at this time, it has something to do with transportation because I have to leave with Nick and John right after this. I met with the highway director personally yesterday. He showed up here to Gaston. He came at our request, which was a big deal, to get the highway director to come here, Mr. Cooper. We discussed the grants that he had given us and thanked him. Also discussed George Wallace Drive. He was very appreciative of how that turned out. He actually rode that road. So we were very appreciative in everything they've given us. We discussed Eastern Connector at length, just to say kindly, he is on our side. And I will say this, his words were, "I owe this to Gaston and Gaston needs a win." And he will see it through that Gaston will get the Eastern Connector completed. So I take him at his word, appreciate his tenacity. For him to come to a city instead of us having to go to him is a big deal. He apologized multiple times, which he did not need to do so, but he said he's going to meet on the Eastern Connector on a weekly basis and he couldn't have been more of a gentleman about it. And I feel confident that the Eastern Connector will have a lot of progress kicking up right now. Right before the holidays, you'll see some movement on that and then you'll start seeing construction hopefully in a year to two years. So we're excited about that and wanted to thank Director Cooper for that and thank you for letting me take that time to mention that.
That's great news. Thank you. I appreciate that. Mayor Ford.
And, Mr. President, just to add on the Transportation Alternative Program grants, like I was just talking about with the value of sidewalks and as the mayor was talking about how important these are, if it goes to show you what we're talking about, how much evidence there is of how this improves your community, it improves the overall health, the federal government is laying out $800,000 to this city to help improve these sidewalk programs. So I promise you, there is tons of research out there that as we improve our sidewalks, as we improve our pedestrian spaces and encourage our citizens to look for transportation alternatives, as they call them. So when you see us pursuing projects like the Greenway Project here, that's a trail system, it's not just for hippie kids on mountain bikes and people who run ultra marathons. The logic behind all of these federal and state efforts are that these can be real alternatives for the ways you get around in your community. You can walk to work. You can ride a bike to work, maybe. You can walk to your grocery store or if you're a special needs individual or have some sort of physical impairments that require you to be in a motorized scooter or something, you have clear, flat surfaces where you can navigate your community easily and as easily as anybody else could. And it makes us a healthier community. It makes us a more friendly community for commerce and business, too. So I just wanted to point that out. I mean, it's not, we're not just talking out of thin air here. We're getting major, major federal funding to promote this idea of connecting our city with usable sidewalks and trail systems.
Good point. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 17, ordinance authorizing non-exclusive franchise to Unity Fiber Gulfco LLC. This is for construction and maintenance of fiber optic transmission line within certain public rights of way. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading and the council will vote on it next week.
The president asked for consideration today. The attorney, what has gotten me is asking me when it's going to pass. I mistakenly told him today.
Okay.
Not realizing it's going to be only the first reading, but apparently they're pretty eager to get this in the road.
All right. So there's been a request by the attorney?
Can we do that?
Can we? There's a question of is, can, are we able to do that on the agenda?
Does this require a public hearing?
It does not.
Okay.
Okay, so this doesn't require a public hearing. It's just suspending the rules and voting to allow Unity Fiber to construct and maintain fiber optic transmission line within certain public rights of way. Anybody have any opposition bringing this up today? Do I have a motion to bring it up?
This is perfect timing. We're going right into the new business stack here. So, yeah, I make a motion that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business today.
Second. All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, it is first reading, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Just real quick, Mr. President, if I could, since we're bringing this up.
Move to adopt.
Yeah, move to adopt. I was just going to, go ahead.
Is there a second?
Councilman Smith. Okay, thank you. All right, you're up.
Okay.
This is for new business. We're in item 18, new business. We have quite a few items this morning.
Yes, sir. And I just wanted to clarify, because we're bringing this up today, this Unity Fiber Gulfco LLC, there's a lot of big words in this ordinance and it's nothing like it seems. So from time to time, the city grants quote-unquote franchise rights for utilities to come in and provide service. We do the same thing with Comcast or any other cable provider or telephone company like AT&amp;T. We give them permission to come in and use city right of way to run their lines or run their lines underground or on poles or whatever. And that's why you see the term "non-exclusive." That means we're not telling these guys that they're the only ones that can do it. We're just giving them permission, saying, "Yeah, if you want to come in and run fiber optic cables to give people high-speed internet and give businesses access to high-speed internet and you want to spend all your money doing it, we will let you use our city right of way in our spaces." This is actually an agreement we already had in place with a company that had said they wanted to try to potentially run fiber optic through here. And the company was acquired by another company and the new company said, "Well, can you pass another ordinance that gives us that non-exclusive franchise right in our name, not just the old company's name?" And so that's all this is. We're just saying, "Yeah, y'all have permission. If you want to go out and spend your money, we will let you run your fiber optic cables to our citizens and our businesses in the City of Gaston." So that's all it is.
Thank you.
With that in mind, move to adopt.
Well, we actually have the motion in secret to adopt, so now we just need to vote.
All right, well, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Right now, we'll be in the new business and I think Councilman Wilson has a handful.
I do, I do. Good stuff. We've got a lot of good stuff moving here. The first one I have, Mr. President, is from the legal department. This is really concerning, a piece of property out at Twin Bridges Golf Course. This is a resolution accepting the conveyance of property from Edge Family Properties, Inc. Long story short, during the pre-council, the city engineer, Heath Williamson, and I like the record to show, Heath, that I always put the sun on the end. I don't just call you Heath Williams like everybody else does. Heath Williamson pointed out that we, it came to our attention that there was a section of land actually at the Twin Bridges Municipal Golf Course that was not the city's. It belonged to a private entity that was right there neighboring the golf course. So Heath was able to meet with the landowners and they worked out a little land swap deal there to clean up this technicality. So that's all this is. We're giving them a little tract of land of .7 acres, I think is what it said. And in exchange, they're giving us a section of our fairway back. So if there's no opposition, I'd like to consider this under new business today.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, Mr. President, the next one I have is for a, this is authorizing approval of a non-reimbursable agreement with Spire, Alabama. This is, again, just kind of a technicality for them to relocate some utilities and facilities on the public right of way for, as part of that South 11th Street realignment project. Like I said, we'll be doing away with that little chicane over there and they're going to relocate some of their pipes and whatnot before we can complete that project. So if there's no objections, I'd like to consider this.
Is there a second? All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, the next one in my stack, I'm not going to do, somebody else can do that one. Okay, let's move on. Resolution, Second Amendment to the Resolution R. 482.24 for adopting the Human Resources Policy and Procedures Handbook. This is, as many of you may recall, when Mayor Ford took over, we had five different municipal handbooks for different departments in the city and none of them were up to date or had been revised in decades. And so they started the process, Tina King and the mayor's administrative staff started the process of consolidating and revising and bringing and modernizing all of these into one single policy and procedure handbook. And so every year, you'll see us make slight adjustments and tweaks to that. That's what this is. This is Second Amendment to adopting the Human Resources Policy and Procedure Handbook. All this says is some, just some, I'll be brief. If there's a medical or psychological examination, the Human Resources Department will schedule that examination. We also made some changes to military leave, giving a little more flexibility and consideration to our employees who are part of a reserve force. What this does is if they're occupied, if, and if an employee occupies a full-time position and they are ordered by appropriate authority to attend training or ordered to active service, they will be paid now up to 192 hours, which is up from 168 hours, I think was the previous. So we're giving them some additional paid hours. And then also, let's see, and fire employees, which were already compensated at a higher rate than a traditional city employee or a standard city employee. So fire employees will now go from 216 hours to 240 hours. We'll also make the probationary period for new hires 12 months, where it was six months prior to that. Let's see, evaluation period for new hires will be, now be nine months. The fire department will now go to a 28-day pay schedule instead of a 14-day pay schedule. All that does is really change the way we calculate their overtime and their holiday accumulation and things. Instead of being on a two-week pay cycle, they're essentially getting paid once a month. Let's see, which required us to change the terms of overtime. For example, since it was two weeks, the overtime was 106 hours. Now that it's 28 days, you double that to 212. No real change. We're just updating verbiage in the document. Same thing under holiday pay, we're just changing from 14 days to 28-day work period. Also now, the benefits portion of the handbook will be providing safety boots to our city employees only instead of safety equipment. That was kind of a vague term and it got the city maybe into some odd situations. What do you, safety equipment wasn't necessarily a defined term. We all know what safety boots are, so we're just updating the handbook to reflect that. And then, short-term disability, employees have to be employed with the city for up to 12 months before they are eligible for disability. So that was a mouthful, but if there's no objections, I'd like to suspend the rules and consider this today, please.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next one I have, Mr. President, is ordinance amending an employee pay scale as adopted in Ordinance O. 2125. Again, if y'all are wondering why we're doing a lot of this stuff on pay handbooks and pay scales, it's because the city's year, fiscal year, ends today and October 1st starts our new budget period. So we're trying to get all this stuff in place before we start our new budget period. What this does is it changes the pay scale determinant for the communications operation assistant from a G5 to a G4. And then we have a couple of new job classifications. The cemetery superintendent role will be a G8 pay scale and the facilities construction tech 2 will be bumped up to a G6 pay scale. Specifically, facility construction tech 2 is a long-winded way of saying contractor and jack-of-all-trades. The city has a lot of full-time contractors and people who work on our facilities and our equipment and our HVAC units and our buildings and all of that stuff. And we're having a hard time recruiting and retaining those individuals, so we're trying to bump the pay up a little bit to see if we can get some of those qualified tradesmen to consider coming and being a part of the full-time staff here at the City of Gaston. With the logic being, of course, tradesmen, anybody who knows any good tradesmen, they do just fine making a living whenever they want to and they can come and go as they please. So we can't compete with that as a city. It's not going to be as much money as you would make as a private individual, but the good thing is we provide all your tools and your transportation. You don't have to worry about the maintenance and upkeep on your vehicles. You get that city vehicle and after 10 years, you're fully vetted in the state retirement system. You have great healthcare. You have great healthcare here, and those are things that you don't always see, as an entrepreneur, I can say, you don't always see when you work for yourself. So all of those things, when you consider it on paper and you take it, there's a lot of stuff that doesn't show up on a paycheck, is, as an entrepreneur, you know? And this is one of those things where we're asking contractors to consider the fact that the city can provide you a lot of fringe benefits that you don't necessarily see reflected on, on a paycheck, that can create some real quality of life for you as an entrepreneur and a tradesperson. So if there's no objection, I'd like to suspend the rules and consider this adjustment to the pay scale under new business.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, the last one I have, Mr. President, I don't care if we just stop right here, is amend in the City Code Section 74, licenses and taxation. This concerns tax on smokable vape products. The state of Alabama passed an ordinance a while ago saying that they were going to impose a tax on vaping, or vape products. They did allow municipalities to impose their own individual tax on those products, or if you did not, the, the state would still impose a tax, but it would all go into one big fund in Montgomery, and then the state would decide how much money your city gets. And in general, that hasn't worked out very well for the city of Gadsden, when we let Montgomery decide how much of our money we get back. So we have made the decision to pass this ordinance, which, again, has to be done prior to October 1, the start of our new budget, that will allow us to levy that vape tax ourselves and collect that tax. So to be clear, this is not a new tax that's being levied by the city of Gadsden on businesses. The state's levying this tax anyway, we're just passing it so that we get the funds directly to the city of Gadsden, not into a big pool of money in Montgomery that they end up passing back out. So if there's no objection, I would like to consider this under new business today as well.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous vote for consideration.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson, that was a bunch.
Yes, sir.
Are you certain you don't want to do this one?
You do such a great job explaining it to the team right there.
Y'all get enough up there at the Falls.
Get educated up here when you do it. I have one, Mr. President, it's from the engineering department. This is a fun one, and we got, it's from authorizing agreement with David, Davis Architects, Incorporated, for them to design the new pavilion and bathrooms up at the campground at the Falls. If you know, right now, at the, at the Black Creek Trail, when you go in there off that parking lot where the chapel is, you know, if you've used the old bathrooms, it's just an old cinder block building, and it's kind of horrible, and it needs to be big-time remodeled. So this is going to actually get us a new pavilion and new bathrooms right there, so I know the public's going to really enjoy that. So if I could ask my colleagues for immediate consideration on this today, I would really appreciate it.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm kidding. Aye.
Okay.
Move to.
We have no opposition, so we, we have unanimous consent, okay?
I'll move to adopt it again.
Okay.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
I guess.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
It's hard, it's really hard sometimes.
Well, we will move to Agenda Item 19, it's department reports, committees, boards, and I know we have one today coming with Craig Scott and Darlene Harkrow, and to talk about community Thanksgiving.
So, good morning, everybody.
Is the mic on?
Thank you, sir. So, good morning, everybody, again, Mr. President, council members. I'm here this morning on behalf, not of the library, but of the Board for Community Thanksgiving. Normally, Darlene and I are here at this time to talk to you about your support for community Thanksgiving, both financially and volunteering on Thanksgiving Day. But after 27 years of serving our community with Alabama's largest Thanksgiving Day meal, serving nearly 11,000 plates last year, the board has made the tough decision to end the event. Rising costs, declining volunteer numbers, and increasing demand have made it unsustainable. This decision was not made lightly, and we are deeply grateful for the many years of support from the city and from our volunteers. And Darlene will expound on this.
All right, thank you. First off, let me say thank you, thank you, thank you for all the times that y'all have rose into the, risen to the occasion to make community Thanksgiving possible. We could have done it without y'all, so thank you so much. I'm going to thank Craig, of course, for, for opening, and as the chair of community Thanksgiving, this has been a very, very hard fought prayer time, seeking the Lord on what we needed to do. I do know that, that it has been our baby. We've held it, we've loved it, we've shared it, we've fed multitude of people. But we're at a different season now, and for that different season, as we came together as a community and we touched people's lives, it had almost became, as Craig said this morning, two big, two big first bridges. Yes, that's a southern one. But at the, at the end of the time, it's time now for our churches and for our community leaders to rise up and become real personal with your community. Because although we came together for the whole entire community, we were beginning to lose a little bit of that personal, even though we tried to love on everybody, but there was still some missing. And so if we, if this comes back to the communities and to the pastors of the areas, doing it all over the city, north, south, east, and west, as well as community around, we feel like this is going to be a better utilization of reaching people, for people not to be missed. Because no matter how big we became, we still relied on the people getting the word, we still relied on people calling, saying, hey, they need food. They didn't, they didn't always do that. But if you're in your community and you are working for reaching out, that pastor in that church has that ability to go out and visit on, you'll take a different area and to be able to reach more people. We are in this day and time where today, our churches are to rise up and reach people for the love of Christ, to feed them. God told me a long time ago that you feed their belly, their spirits are open to be able to be taught and loved on, and brought to them, brought to Him. So today, although we're stepping back, we are, we're praying at this time, fervently praying, that our churches will rise and be who God's called them to be, to reach out and be the hands and feet of Jesus, to be the ones who, that when, when they go to that community, they love on those people, they feed them, and they let them know that our Jesus, our Savior, is greater than any, anything we can do. And not only doing this one day a year, one day of the, one day of the year, doing it the whole entire part of the year, so that they're reaching these communities. Thank you, thank you again so very much. It is saddening us for us to step back, but I know that God has a total different purpose to be able to reach people, and I encourage you, in your communities, you do it already, but in your communities, get out there and bring these churches together, help them to unite, our community leaders to unite, to be able to feed the people of Edgeworth County. Thank you.
Thank you, Darlene, and thank you, Craig. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I do have a question, Mr. President. Thank you for 27 wonderful years. That's been a tremendous blessing. But I just want to like to know, when did we find out? I mean, it's October. When did we find out that we were not going to be feeding this year?
Okay, so the, we had our, has it been about three weeks ago since we've had our? About three weeks ago, is when we came to the board to decide. It was, it, this has not been something that we've been contemplating all year. It was like, all of a sudden, the Lord released me, I thought it was going to do it this year. We went before the board, and the board says, we all unanimously, they decided that, they felt like it was time to set it down. So it has blown me away, so I go, oh, how do we get this thing pulled together? I don't know that answer, but as Christians, then I would say, and you being a pastor, you understand. All I can say is seek Him. I do know that Pastor Joe Simmons, which New Liberty Taker, which started it all those years ago, I do know that he's working, he's called some pastors, I think they had a meeting this past Saturday, they were going to come, but him and Buster was going to come this morning and speak as well, I think. So they're, they're going to be the one, the contact information to reach out. I don't know how it's going to play out this year, I honestly don't know, which is very hard for me, because I like to know what happens next.
Right.
But at this time, it's just one of these things, it's just trusting that God's going to put it on the people's heart to do exactly what they're called to do.
I just, I just wanted to say, we do appreciate all that's been done over the years, I just wish we'd known a little bit sooner, to be able to kind of address it a lot more efficiently, so.
I wish I'd have had more time, so thank you, but yes, I'm just, I'm praying for y'all to know what to do.
May I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Thank you again for 27 years of doing it. Do you know what the budget is, or what it was, when you ended, what it would take?
About 48,000. But like I was telling Pastor Joe, for us, we done our webpage, we done our, we had to have all this extra that these churches wouldn't necessarily have, because you either have a Facebook where your group is with, or a webpage, but you're already doing that already. So all those extras for us, it's not extras you're going to have to be doing. Our food last year cost us right at 24,000, and then, of course, we had our paper products and all that stuff that we had to do extra. I don't have the exact figure, just number, and a food and those paper products, I can get that to you, of course.
But you said the food was alike 24,000?
About 24,000, yes.
And how many did you feed last year?
Four people shy of 11,000.
Anybody else have any comments or questions?
Darlene, Craig, and all of the crew, Pastor Simmons, and Mr. Buster, greatly appreciative of, of the hard work and the effort that went into this each year. I've, I've enjoyed the opportunity to come out and volunteer with you all, the passion and the dedication that goes into it. But as I listen, I, I did share some questions as it relates to the cost of volunteers. I was hoping that that's where it stopped at, compared to ending the program. But as you continued on, I liked the word "rise up." I think the Atlanta Falcons started off with that a while back, but, and, and I'm grateful for a lot of those organizations that have already started that work, or that has been doing that work. Particularly, I can name a few as it relates to my community that come in, and as you stated, do that on a regular basis. I know Tabernacle does it every Wednesday or Tuesday, Carla Bugs does it every Sunday, and, and the list goes on, just to name those couples. And so I do like that, I do appreciate that, because I think that is, and, and what we do, I have been doing lately, is a challenge coin. That's a challenge coin to our community churches to step up and rise up, and it's ministry. It, it amazes me how we just minister inside the walls when our work is outside of the walls. And so I, I'm, I'm, I like that. That drives and pushed me to get back to what I used to do. Usually, I pull out those barbecue grills at the front of my house, and they knew what time it was. And I don't do a little bit of hot dogs and hamburgers either, and so whatever, you know, goes on there, the community have and eat. And so I'm grateful for that. I appreciate that challenge. Again, thank you all for your hard work and dedication. When the Lord giveth, you follow. And so, hey, and sometimes those, those commands are not basically what we want to do. However, again, you know, you have to step, step aside and allow Him to leave you. So I, I pray Godspeed on you all's next mission for this community, for this city. It reached the county, so I'm grateful, and just looking forward to what's next for you all. But thank you for that challenge, though.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'm the furthest thing from a preacher up here, so I can't talk shop the way the rest of you guys can, but my mother did call me a beer evangelist when I started the brewery, but.
God have a name right.
I don't have anything to say other than, thank you, man. You are incredible people, and this city wouldn't be what it is without y'all. So many people in this community, we get, you know, on paper, and you can prove this, Gadsden's one of the most charitable, pound-for-pound places in America. When you talk about percentage of income that people give to local charitable efforts in this community, we're one of the most charitable places in America. And it, it's amazing to me that you get, you live in a city to where people get so used to it, that they start getting mad at you if you don't do it the right way, or they start criticizing you, and nobody realizes that you guys have zero obligation to do any of this. And you do it out of the kindness of your hearts, and everybody in this city is fortunate to be, you know, the receivers of that kindness. Y'all should, you should go home and not have an ounce of anxiety in your chest, and you should sit back and let the sun hit you in the face and smile, and know that you've, you've done a good thing for your community.
Thank you. On the note to say.
No notes. You are awesome. The end.
Let me say this, as far as, just because you're not a pastor, you have, you are movement in this community. So with that being said, if the churches don't rise up, by all means, feed them from your community, or feed them from your house, because that's where it all starts. That's what starts for us to become a community, is when we bond together, no matter where we at. So thank y'all for all you do.
Thank you, council members. Anybody else?
One other quick comment, I think it should be noted, we're a 501(c)(3), so we need to dissolve that, and we've been talking to the legal side on, on how exactly we go about that. But not a penny goes into any administrative costs, it all goes into the, into the, into the event. So we do have some money that we normally carry over, and we do, so we will be, as a board, talking about where that goes. And then also, the, there's a lot of supplies that we've collected over the years, 20 boxes, for instance, from Max Packaging, okay? Utensils. We've got 20 boxes of 1,000, I think, each, as an example, that we can help other churches. And I, when, when Joe comes up, I hope he talks more about the east-west, north-south idea, that we're fully behind and want to support that, so.
All right.
Anyway, thank you.
And just to highlight, to maybe give to, to of those organizations that I know, one is Back Forty, that does their Thanksgiving drive-through, and then, I don't know, I can't remember former councilman Thomas Worthy's organization name, but he does a Thanksgiving dinner as well. So those are just two organizations. I know how it is to dissolve that 501(c)(3) and those funds going back into the community. Those two that I know, just right off the top of my dome right now.
By the way, when, when we were discussing this early on, we called in, and we called in Pastor Joe, because that's where it all started, and had a lengthy discussion with him about things. And I think when he comes up, he'll tell you the same that he told us, that he envisions this as even a larger event, potentially, okay? Maybe we take a little dip now, but in the future, if this becomes more a neighborhood, that Gadsden can be known as a neighborhood community Thanksgiving, I think that, that will go a long way. We're already headed in that direction. You probably have seen some Facebook posts and all, dynamic outreach in South Gadsden. They're going to serve on Thanksgiving Day from 12 to 2. The Salvation Army, I've talked to the new lieutenant over there, he can take a max of 250 this year. He's going to serve from 1, no, from noon to 3. Pastor Joe, already, you guys know, at, at New Liberty, he's already feeding daily, and the pastor told us that he'll feed on Thanksgiving Day, I believe, from 11 to 1. So in Glencoe, because we reached out into the, into the county, Glencoe First Baptist is already doing a Thanksgiving meal, they'll continue that. So the, the, the foundation is there. So becoming a, it was, like she said, we're too big for, big for our bridges. It was getting, and people would, people would come in for takeouts, grab a bunch of takeouts, and be gone in five minutes. It, it wasn't the community Thanksgiving anymore. So, thank you again.
Thank y'all. Thank you very much for 27 years of service, and the Bible talks about seasons, everything has a season, and so I think what we're witnessing is not necessarily the end of a season, we're going to, I think we're about to hear the birth of a new season. So, so it's, it's exciting, so thank y'all, and thank your board, too. Any other department reports? All right, we will now go to citizen request, and the timing is perfect. We're going to have Buster Porch and Reverend Simmons come and talk about community Thanksgiving event. So you gentlemen are welcome, and we're glad you're here.
You know, unaccustomed as I am to public speaking, and there are times when I just revere standing behind the mic, and this is one of those times. So what I've given to you is a short history and a reason for the discontinuation of this community Thanksgiving meal, but Pastor Simmons will elaborate on what he can see for in the future. He sees a bright future. If this started... the future. He sees a bright future. If this started as an idea, and it lasted 27 years, and last year, as is stated under letter, four short of 11,000 people served. That's amazing. You know, I had the privilege of, my, one of my hobbies is playing music, so I have the privilege of being the DJ for that entire day, and now I have to find someplace else to play my music. But, hey, I'll find a place. But Pastor Simmons will give you his idea as to the future. So Pastor Joe Simmons.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, good morning. First, I just wanna say thank you. It's, it's really not a sad occasion to me, because I know God is sovereign, and whatever He's doing, He's progressively doing it for our good. I, I wanna say thank you to Community Unity Thanksgiving Board and 501(c)(3). What a blessing they've been. I wanna say thank you to, over the span of, really actually around 30 something years, because we gotta count the years that it started there at New Liberty. The mayors that were in concern, the council that was in concern. It's just bigger than this moment, the citizens that were during that time that came out. It, it was just bigger. United Way, you know, for a period of time carried it. We have a quality of life, nobody probably knew about that, where we served from over at Quality of Life, went to Mr. Rowe and asked him. It was just too big for our church. And the city vote with the school board, they allowed us to use Dunhuh Elementary School. It's just a lot that's involved in it. Praise God. I was just trying to write it down. The city school board was there. It just, just different entities that played a part. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And, and I believe because it started there at New Liberty, through a, a vision that God gave, and I never would imagine that it would expand to the point that, where it has. So I know it's been, God sure hadn't been Brother Simmons, it sure hadn't been any of us individuals, it was God. And I believe it's to keep going, but it's to grow. And the only place for it to grow, I believe, is coming back home to the body of Christ, that it's a responsibility that we have. And on the 27th of September, we had a meeting there Saturday with the community pastors, and we were excited about the turnout, we were excited about what was discussed there, really about a northeast-southeast approach to it, where we asked site pastors to gather other pastors in the area together, and begin, and to serve from a northeast-southeast, and we identified them. I won't give that information right now, because we have another meeting, which I wanna shout out from here on the 4th, which is this, this Saturday at 9:00 a.m. there at New Liberty, where all the pastors in the area are invited to come out, and then discuss how we can gather around those northeast-southeast areas to make sure that it, it, it goes forth. We're figuring on, if we could get each, each sector to serve 500, you know, 500 plates, and figure on the budget for those 500 plates, and make sure that those pastors and those sites are equipped from all of the churches that gathered together. If they're equipped, make sure that that, that income is there so that they can be equipped to serve those 500 plates. The volunteers will be registered and everything, and make sure that we're, we're there and, and manned up to do it. I believe it will be great. I believe it has a potential of going way over 11,000, to tell you the truth, because there are a lot of people that can't get there. Like Mr. Darlene said, the, the intimate fellowship, it was missing. I got, I believe we got to where we were actually discounting numbers. So I'm excited about what God is doing. So as we develop that potential, as we develop in those meetings, we'll announce and share with the city through Facebook and everything else, how it will develop. I know it's gonna be God, I know it's gonna be great, and I know it, it may take a dip at this time as we restructure ourselves, but I believe that everything's gonna be great. So asking you to support us, thanking the city, the council again for all you've done, thanking the mayors, thanking the citizens for all, all that's taking place. But, but we're looking up. I'm looking up. I'm looking up to the reports that are gonna come from each site. We have at the Bread Basket already be, we've already been serving since October the 14th. October the 15th, we've been serving Monday through Fri, through Friday every week. And the need is definitely there for food challenge and people that are transitioning. A lot of things, I, I know that we have to do something. We will be open on Thanksgiving Day, and there are other, I believe, I know Brother Patrick Washington, he serves, they're gonna be open on Thanksgiving Day. But the day in which we, as the coalition of ministers and churches, the day in which we will serve, it may be different than Thanksgiving Day. We're gonna make sure that everything kinda works together, because I think the greatest message in this is not so much the food or, or anything like that, but it's the unity. It is us coming together to work together. So however we have to bend and shape and morph to do that, I believe in that unity, God's gonna give us the answer to how it should be. So it's more about unity, more about coming together, it's more about ministers being intimate in their area and knowing their constituents that are in their, in their neighborhoods, and they, they will, I believe we'll get a greater response. I believe that. So thank you again. Thank you, Council. Be sure to tell the mayor we said thanks. Thanks to Community Unity Thanksgiving, and we're looking forward to greatness in this to come. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you, Pastor Simmons.
You know, I want to personally thank all the volunteers through this 27-plus years. That's far, far too many to announce, to name. But without volunteers in this Community Thanksgiving, without volunteers in the city, in your organizations, I think we should reach out more to notify the citizen that volunteers are needed. I think all of us elected office, I know through my 23 years in elected office in Illinois, I started out as a volunteer. So if you would just notify the people that volunteers are needed, this is what can be done. 27-plus years, thank all, each and every volunteer that made it possible. Thank you, city.
Thank you, Buster. All right. That is a great report. Pastor Simmons, your vision 27 years ago, amazing. So I'm excited about the next 27 years. So I, I think I, I agree with you. I'm, I'm in agreeance. I think it's gonna be bigger. So thank you, sir. All right. We have one more citizen request today. Don Berkey has asked to come speak about grass cuttings at 1501 Tuscaloosa Avenue.
Thank you for letting me speak. Yes, sir. I've owned property on Tuscaloosa for three years. It's a church building that's not being used. I've mowed it for those three years, but last year, in between the, at least five times that I mowed it, the city had it mowed three times without me knowing anything about it until I got a bill for $450 each time they mowed it. So 450 times three, 13, 13,0350 dollars for mowing grass that, they, the building department said they sent me a letter concerning it. I never received it. I checked my mail faithfully. I had no idea they were mowing the grass until I got the bill for, as I said, $1,350. I have a, a drawing here, well, a map of the area. The part in red and blue is the grass that was mowed, but I only own, there, there's two lots there. I own the lot that the church is on, I did not own the lot side of it. So about one-third of the grass they mowed was on my property. Approximately two-thirds of the grass they mowed was not on my property. Now, the whole time I've, I've had the property, I mowed that whole area, even though I didn't own two-thirds of it.
Mr. Berkey, could I interrupt you for just one second, please? If you could step back behind the podium there, we, I wanna make sure that you're captured by the microphone.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
Wanted you to see the, the picture. I thought you could see easier if I was closer. Sorry.
Well, that's okay.
Yeah. Okay. Anyway, my understanding is they, they based their bill on the total size of the lot. And if you see this, between the driveway and the wooded area up the back, two-thirds of the area was not mowed. One-third of the area, and I only owned one-third of the one-third that was mowed. In addition to that, I have been mowing two lots that the city owns for 12 years. One next to my house on 2200 Clayton Avenue, directly across from the hiking trail, and a lot owned by the city at 2314, right next to another house I own. I've been mowing those two lots that the city owned for 12 years. I never asked for a dime. It's just, they were right next to my property. It looked, my property looked nicer if I mowed the city property as well. So I've been mowing a lot of city property for 12 years, and they mowed my, my grass three times and charged me 1,350. I, I thought that was very exorbitant. They then sent me a letter reducing that amount, but it was still hundreds of dollars. Even when I hired, usually I did the mowing, but even when I hired it done, the guy charged me $20 to mow what, what they were charging me $450 for. I would like some mercy on this. I, I, I think that was very, very exorbitant and, and unreasonable.
All right. Can you leave that with us? You can hand it to the clerk right here?
Yes, you can have it ground.
You can leave it to the clerk right there.
I own this lot.
Right, we got that.
We got.
Blue is what I owned it, mowed. The red is what they mowed that I did not own.
All right. Can, can we keep that?
Uh, yes.
All right, okay. All right. Well, this body will, I mean, this is not the public hearing or anything, so we'd have to get with the city attorney, because all this has already been passed through. But I think we'll, we'll certainly take a look at that and, and see where it goes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you for coming, Mr. Berkey. All right. That concludes the citizen requests. And now we're at remarks by mayor and council. Anything from the mayor's office?
Just one thing real quick. Tomorrow is National Coffee with a Cop Day, so we are doing Coffee with a Cop at the East Gadsden Community Center from 8:30 till about 10:00. I invite everyone in here to please come out. You'll have the opportunity to have one-on-one conversation with not only the police officers, but hopefully some of the council will be there as well.
Thank you, Tina. All right. We will start with Councilwoman Latham. We'll go back to our numerical order.
Thank you, President Beck.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanna start by saying again, thank you for 27 years of service, and thank Pastor Simmons for the vision. And we know that God will lead and that He will bless accordingly those efforts that are being put forth to continue this year. So we, we thank you for 27 years of that, and thank you Pastor Simmons for stepping up to try to move forward. I do want to say thank you to the Miller Heights, Lincoln Heights Neighborhood Association for allowing us, they met, asked us to come and meet on last evening, and it was a very productive meeting. Thank you to those citizens who came out and stressed their concerns about things that were taking place in their communities. And so we've heard those concerns, but we just appreciate you allowing us the opportunity to hear. And so we will govern ourselves accordingly to see about getting those things, or those concerns heard and answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Don't have much. Another good day of government. Just wanna thank everybody for all that you're doing, every department head. We appreciate you. Definitely thank the mayor staff and city hall representatives that came out on last week. So we're gonna get ready, we're gonna reschedule our community chat to a different day, but we're certainly looking forward to that taking place in District 2. So be listening up for that. Again, thank you to the Thanksgiving Community Board for all that you all have done over the years. Though it's been a tremendous blessing, we were a big part of helping feed when Mr. Cuthbert owned all the Popeyes restaurants all those many years, and we had to stop it once he sold all his restaurants, because had a good relationship with him, and he helped us to get some of these areas that needed to be covered. But again, thank you for everything. Thank you also Pastor Simmons for the vision, the long time that you did it, United Way had it, and other places. I didn't know about Quality of Life till today, but the city took on it, and it just continued to grow and grow and grow. And I, I guess I felt a little overwhelmed hearing that it wasn't taking place. I know that's a major undertaking to just take on, but I know God's grace is sufficient, so we look forward to continue to strategize, to set up something. Of course, it's gonna have to start small and grow again. Definitely won't be able to pick up where we left off on, on last year. So thank you all for all that you've done, and we look forward to continue to be the city of champions and to serve our city. So thank you. Thank you to Mayor Ford and his staff, and also to the council. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilman Avery?
Mr. President, thank you. Got a question. Well, I'll wait on a question. Let's do this. First, let me do this. On, on the behalf of the children and our now elder matriarch of the Knows family, I want to thank those that reached out and called, by whatever way that you have extended your condolences and prayers to our family and the loss of our dear Leah Knows. We, we greatly appreciate it. It's been a rough 2025. This is our eighth member of our family we have lost in this year alone. And so as we continue to move forward, we, we're grateful for all of those friends and family members that have reached out in, in any, any way and manner that you have to show our family that you care. In, in, in my absence, I, I greatly appreciate those calls and texts. On that note, on another note, as it relates to District 3 and, and the surrounding areas, Harvest Fest, October the 4th, 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and we're gonna do three blocks of Tuscaloosa Avenue, and it's gonna be a trunk or treat. That's Saturday, October the 4th, 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. The starting, or the place of parking can be 10:30 Tuscaloosa Avenue, which is at the Carver Square there. It's gonna be free food. It's also the annual Sixth Street Day celebration. Live music, DJed music, costumes, candy, hay rides, bounces, fun, a whole, whole bunch of things. And so we're, we're doing a community effort now to, again, three blocks of that street there, to where that you can park safely, dress up your, trunk of your vehicles, things of that nature, and enjoy just as relates going back, community. Before I make my comments on the Community Thanksgiving, just again, community is ringing. So community, drawing community more close together to do these things. And so that's October the 4th, again, 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and also the annual Sixth Street Day Celebration. October the 18th is a day that we're also doing a partnership. This would be myself, as well as a partnership with Ashley Goggins and Raven Vizi. This is a yoga and SIP event, and it's, it's designed to uplift the body, calm the mind, and strengthen our spiritual and mental well-being. This is a community event. All are welcome to come out and, and, and participate. All are welcome to come out and, and, and participate. We're asking that you bring your yoga mats, your yoga blocks, blankets, those are optional, but a, and a pen and a journal for documents of, of just some things throughout the yoga experience. On the SIP part, we're partnered with two of our local vendors here in the city. One is Go Naked Juice, and the other is The Candy Factory. Go Naked Juice will bring their juicers and things of that nature. This is also promoting healthy lifestyles and principles in our community. Being representative of a district that has the most federal housing, we have challenges in our district. And one of those challenges is the healthy lifestyles and principles. And so we are trying to be unique in the way that we address that and show affordability as well in, in doing so. But some things that you can do, that we're going to be doing as a community, but that you also can do at home. And so we want to thank those partners and sponsors. Again, Ms. Vizi is well-trained in what she do. And so we're, we're so grateful to have her to come out. Again, this gentle morning yoga flow will guide us through movement, breath, breathwork, and mindful sips to help us connect with ourselves and importantly, each other. So that date again is October the 18th. It begins at 11:00 AM at Carver Square, and that's 10:30 Tuscaloosa Avenue. Want to give a big shout out to Gadsden City High School. This Friday is Gadsden City Homecoming. This Friday is Gadsden City Homecoming. And so the parade begins at 1:00 PM. I think school lets out at 11:30 PM, 11:30 AM. And the parade begins at 1:00 PM here downtown Gadsden. And then the game is at 7:00 PM. So we asking all to come out and support our Gadsden City Titans as they get ready to take upon Lee High School for a great homecoming. October the 28th, which is a Tuesday, 4:00 PM at Carver Community Center, District Three will hold its community meeting, monthly community meeting. So again, if you are available, have some concerns outside of those that have not been addressed, or things of that nature, please make it, make yourself available if possible to be physically present at 4:00 PM at Carver Community Center on October the 28th. If not, you know how to get in touch with me via phone call or text. And we'll make sure that we get those concerns sent to the proper department head and those that sponsor them, and, and make sure that we can get those concerns addressed promptly. Thank you so much.
Thank you Councilman Avery. Councilman Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, to Pastor Simmons, Ms. Porch, the, the community nonprofit organization, just no notes. You're perfect. You are awesome. What you do is amazing. I, I just wish more people realized that this city would be in a much worse place if we didn't have people like you walk in the streets. And I'm thankful for you. I'm thankful for you every day. Also, just in general, I want to talk about our meeting structure, because I feel like sometimes this is not clear, and it gets misinterpreted a lot. We operate under the Open Meetings Act, which is a law in the state of Alabama. What that means, open meetings does not mean that this, this meeting is not designed to be an interactive experience between citizens and council members. And in fact, the reason that it's not is because we actually try to provide much more access as elected officials. I give my personal private cellphone number out all the time, and I'll do it again right now. That is my personal cellphone number. You will not get a secretary. You're not going to get some agency representative that's going to route you through a call tree. That is my phone number. Call me, okay? The reason that these meetings are not designed, like I tell people a lot, what it means to be an open meeting, what that means is that you can come in here and observe the city doing their business. It does not mean that you are entitled to come and engage. So, and, and I'm not being critical of anybody, because I just think people don't understand what it means to be an open meeting. It means you are entitled to come watch us do our business. If you need something done, call us directly. It's not because we don't want, we're hiding from the public and don't want to, it is inefficient to have people come in here and try to have their issues addressed real time. It's just not the way the city works. We don't have the ability to simply wave a wand if someone's standing here and say, we've decided to do it this way. For example, this city council does not have control over city employees. We don't, all city employees report to the mayor. I cannot tell a police officer what to do. I cannot tell a building department and manager what to do. I can't go to the city attorney and say, draw this up. We've decided that this, we don't have that authority. We are here to oversee the budget of the city of Gadsden and to pass ordinances and resolutions for the day-to-day operation. But the employees of this city ultimately report to the mayor. And that's why it's important that you work with these department heads and go to these department heads and form relationships with them if you have problems, because you can get things done. Coming here and expecting, and, and again, this is not being critical of, of the speakers we had today. I just want to clarify so that we can all actually get stuff done, and you don't get disappointed with us, because the expectation here is, when, again, when you, when you have an open meeting, it just means you're here to observe. You're allowed, we're not doing this behind closed doors. We're not passing ordinances and resolutions so nobody knows about them. If we're going to pass an ordinance or resolution in the city, we have to do it out in the public so everybody can see that we do it. Open meeting does not mean that you get to ask questions and we have to answer real time, because it would take forever. It would take all, all day. And the truth of the matter is, what we've discovered is most of the people who repeatedly want to do that, a lot of times are just up here to, to grandstand and to make us feel, you know, to shake their finger at us and tell us that we're doing something wrong, not necessarily for a productive reason. So I'm just encouraging y'all, we're here for you. Every member of this council is here to support you. If you have a problem going to those department heads and you're not getting the response you think you deserve, reach out to your council members individually, and we can advocate for you inside this building when you can't be here to advocate for yourself. We can follow up on your behalf and go, hey, where are we on this issue? My constituents asked me about this, you know, can y'all give me an update on that? I need to get back to it. You know, but it's not us versus y'all. We, these council members are way more on your side. It's all of us versus the mayor. No, I'm kidding. That was a joke. I was just kidding. But I mean, seriously, we are here to help navigate the bureaucracy that is small government and big government. We're not good at what we do. Government by, inherently, by definition is inefficient. It's overlapping, it's inefficient, it falls short of the way you would do it in your private business, because we have regulations and guidelines and restrictions that tie our hands that a lot of you guys probably don't realize. And again, for example, the whole idea of the Open Meetings Act, I always joke and say this, the way you can understand what the Open Meetings Act means with how you interact here at a council meeting, it's like buying a ticket to a baseball game. When you buy a ticket to a Braves game, you are buying a ticket to go in and sit down and watch the ballgame. It does not give you permission to go out there and pick up a baseball bat and put a uniform on and start taking batting practice with the team. You know what I mean? It, you are, that is the Open Meetings Act. You are, we are guarantee you that you will always be able to come see the team play ball. It is not guaranteeing you that you're going to get out there and get to pitch a few, you know? So please, y'all, just keep that in mind, because we've gotten a lot of criticism on social media recently about when we hold our meetings and how we should hold our meetings in the afternoons, when people can show up. Well, number one, we've tried that before and nobody else shows up. It's, we've done it. Nobody else comes. But number two, the most important thing about that I wish people understood is, if you understand how Open Meetings Act works, you being here or not, is it important? You're still going to get to see the city doing their business out in public, whether you see it real time, or whether you see it on Friday on a recorded video on YouTube. The point is, we're being transparent when we pass ordinances and resolutions and spend taxpayers' money, we're, we're showing everybody. Our hands are wide open and we show everybody what we're doing. That's the point of the Opens Meetings Act. So whether we have the meeting in the morning, or whether we have it at night, or whether we come to your house and sit on your front lawn and have the meeting, you, it still doesn't mean you get to yell questions at us. That's not the way the meeting structure is supposed to work. If you want to yell at us, or ask us questions, or tell us you think we're doing a terrible job, pick up the phone and call us. We'll come meet with you. We'll come sit down at your house, and you can give us the business. You can tell us that we're doing a bad job. You can tell us what you think we ought to do right. So my point is, rather than thinking we're trying to give you less access, please understand that the reason we're in this situation is because we're trying to give you more access. You have access to us. You can call us personally, and we will have real conversations with you directly. It's not that we're trying to hide from anything. So I just wanted to elaborate on that, and hopefully it helps people understand that we're here for you and we care about you.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. Councilwoman Minatra?
I would just like to say thank you to the Public Works Department and Tina King. Last Saturday, from 7:00 to noon, we had, I'm sure we probably broke some records with the amount of trash that we collected. But we do this quarterly, and we probably will, I'm, I'm looking at Ms. King right now, we may skip the month of December and move to January, but we hold the dumpster day free, and it is the last Saturday of the month. And we, we do it that way because it coincides with our opportunity to open the landfill free, just as dumpster day is free, with a few minor exceptions of things that you can't bring, such as chemicals, paint, and tires. But we receive a lot of thank yous from the public for those days. And I certainly did get a lot of those thank yous last Saturday for the one that we held at the West Megan Sports Park, which probably won't be our favorite spot in the future, because it'll be under construction. But I appreciate the, the employees. We had a great team there, and I'm sure that teams at the other two locations were just as great. So thank you Tina, and thanks to Public Works.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have much. I just want to reiterate, I just want to personally thank this Community Thanksgiving Board and, and all y'all did. I just want to do that personally, because I know that's 27 years of, of hard work. And I, and I love the attitude you guys brought up here, you know, by coming up here and saying it wasn't going to happen, you almost like smutted it in a positive way, and it is going to be a positive way, how it could actually be bigger in the future and, and actually more impactful.
Impactful.
Yeah, with the smaller communities around us. Thank you very much, Mr. Wilson. He does that a lot. I, I get tied up sometimes, my brain just gets a little crazy up here, man. You know what I'm talking about? But anyway, but yes, I, I really appreciate the attitude, and I appreciate all y'all did for all that time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. I do want to, again, publicly acknowledge and thank you that have been involved with the Community Thanksgiving for 27 years. Pastor Simmons, that was your vision, and then it, it grew legs, and then it grew a bunch of legs. And what a wonderful event it has been. It's just, you know, the, you're a victim of your own success. I mean, it's just, it's just too big, and I can, I can, I, I was there, saw, and I could see that it lost some of the personal touch. It just became a corporate event, and that's not what it ever was intended to be. So I do think the best days are yet to come, and I think it, it'll, it'll be even better than, than what it has been, which is really a major statement, because it's been fantastic. So thank you, and thank you, and to all the volunteers. Mr. Porch said it really well, that this event cannot go without the, probably thousands of volunteers. It was amazing to see the different high school groups and families that would come, and just all kind of folks that wanted to pitch in. And it became a, just a true community event. My prayer is that those same volunteers will go out into their community, and they'll know about the church and their community that's going to carry this forward, and then they'll volunteer there. So I hope you volunteers, if you're watching and listening, don't, don't put your volunteer shoes up just yet, because I think it's, you're, you're going to be needed in, in the days and years to come. Well, we've had a good day today, and as Councilman Smith likes to say, it's been a good day of government. Mayor Ford announced earlier before he had to leave that he met with Department of Transportation Director John Cooper on various projects. We've received a lot of grants from Montgomery, from the Department of Transportation, continue to receive those. But the best news is that he committed, again, reaffirmed his commitment to the Eastern Connector, which is the extension of I-759, that will really help our city on so many levels to alleviate traffic on Megan Bridge and the Memorial Bridge, which we all call Broad Street Bridge. All that's going to be very helpful. So that was, that was good news, among many other things that we passed today. Our engineering department continues to work feverishly on a multitude of projects here in the city of Gadsden. You know, there's cranes in the air, there's new sidewalks, there's new, streets are being paved, things are just really happening. It's just a, it's a great time to be in Gadsden, and we appreciate all of you being here today. And we look forward to seeing you next Tuesday. We are adjourned.